I second that motion. All in favor? Aye. Come in Eric.
Good morning.
Morning Eric. How are you? You have the floor, Mr. Bailey.
All right, thank you. Just kind of give you a heads up here or let you know Samuel Boez with Ken's Department of Health and Environment will be here today to inspect our closed MSW landfills. So that'll be this afternoon. He's supposed to give me a holler when he gets here and we'll look at.
About their annual inspection?
That is his annual. I'm not for sure. Last year when he showed he had others show and we ended up getting our annual. So I don't know if that's going to happen this year or not. So soybeans. I sent the email last week after our meeting, or actually it was the next day. And low and behold, I got an email back and it says, "I just found out yesterday that the permit application is now through internal concurrence and I'm preparing it for the public notice. The public notice will be from June 30th through July 29th." So anyhow, we are moving forward with that and I believe Ashley has received it.
I received the paper copy yesterday.
That's about seventeen, eighteen months with the state. That's not bad. Well, a long time, but he's been working on it about eighteen months.
Right. Anyhow, we're moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Yes, so yeah, just thought that was kind of interesting, but anyhow. Our LRSP, our Local Road Safety Program, they have scheduled a safety workshop here. It'll be July 19th, which is a Tuesday. It'll be from one to five. And we haven't actually came up with a location yet, but they'll have drawings and pictures and maps and things like that to show their recommendations and what have you that they found from doing the study. So be very informative and we'll invite everyone. And they have a big list of different organizations they'd like for us to invite as well. So but when we come up with the location, we'll let you know, but would like you to get on your calendar, July 19th from one to five. Asphalting, we are kicking it off today. We're in Hyattville. Yesterday, kind of cleared the edges of the roads and swept it and what have you. Today, we're going to fill in some of the larger holes. We're waiting on our distributor truck. Got a seal out of the pump. It's been Van Kepel now going on three weeks. We had it there over the winter and for whatever reason, the seal didn't act up then or didn't find or whatever. Anyhow, they throw to us COVID's got our seal on back order and this and that, but supposedly it's supposed to be here today, so.
And it's spray bar or what?
It's on the underneath. Yeah, so anyhow. I know when we were trying to offload, we went and got a load of oil and when we tried to offload it, yeah.
Is your AC oil staying about steady or is it up and down quite a bit?
It's up. Yeah, so. But anyhow, we're going to do what we can get done. Monitor our budget's very close and we'll.
That's how long you stay in district too.
Anyhow, with that being said, Friday, we will, got a call yesterday from Jed Kilow. He'll be bringing the milling machine in and we will be milling Yale Road from 65th to the west entrance to the lake.
Are you taking that down to base or just?
We're gonna, well.
Reclaim it?
We're gonna reclaim it. I don't know what base is there. I don't think we're gonna find much base. Yeah.
Mixing it with something or hauling it off.
Yeah.
Every time we did any patching on that, the base we found was XYZ.
Right.
Unbelievable.
Terrible.
Yeah, so.
You know, and the east side of the road from the lake entrance, northeast is a mess.
It is. It's an absolute mess, so.
That bigger machine ought to go quick.
Yeah.
Not anybody's fault except for when they put it in.
Right, and they feel they can have it done in a day, so.
That's not bad.
We're.
Are you saving the, hauling the waste off?
We're gonna just do it right there. We're not, we're just gonna mix it right in and roll it in and.
That's what we did last time.
And if we need to add a little moisture, we're gonna see what the moisture content is when we mill it up. We need to add a little water to it. We'll add a little water and run the rollers over it, compact it in and see what we get.
Good.
So the west side, we've had it in there for twenty years. It'll be a pretty good base by now.
Yeah. Oh, yes, west of 65th, yeah. Yeah. Just a couple of side notes. Did have a tree go down over the weekend, Zink and 245th. Said tree was full of honeybees, so that made it a little exciting, but anyhow. Do want to thank the individual that attempted to help us with their tractor, but had an open cab and that didn't go over too well. So ended up having to go get the blade to get it off the road, but anyhow, that's taken care of. And also, I know you received a call as well on a sinkhole on 200th and the railroad tracks.
Probably culvert probably.
It's a concrete culvert. Outlet side is claw, are full of gravel or what have you, so anyhow, made contact with BNSF yesterday. They will be onsite Thursday and we will dig it up and replace it and. But we went ahead and temporarily the hole for time being so we could open the road up and.
Thank you.
Got that taken care of. Also, speaking of culverts, culvert crews continuing to work on 215th out there. Getting ready for asphalt, so moving forward with that. We are scheduling a blast for Blake. The overburden is, has been removed for this area. With the new crusher, we may be able to run quite a bit of material that was left over before from being too big or what have you. So we may not do as big of a blast as we was originally scheduled. We'll at least do our forty thousand, maybe a little bit more, but we were thinking maybe a sixty or more. And we may hold off on that to see, we just feel that there's quite a bit of material there that we can still make road rock and what have you out of now with the new crusher, so.
Yeah, that big grizzly makes the difference.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Good.
Kind of giving you heads up on that. We also completed phase one of our training for the crusher last week. Now they're gonna have us run it for a month or two somewhere near and then they'll take us to Nashville to the factory to train us onsite there, so just kind of giving you a heads up on that.
You learn a lot there watching it, building right there probably.
Right.
Watch that thing go together. You learn a lot about that machine, so.
Right, right.
That's good.
Kind of give you heads up there. And then last but not least, we did get a call last week that the O7F 750 became available from Premier in Kansas City. We went up and looked at it. It's got a CAT C7 motor in it, twenty-eight thousand actual miles. So we went ahead and spoke for it. It's automatic. I believe Allison Transmission was what I think they said on that. But had a little bit of, got a little bit of rust in the bed or what have you, but we can go ahead and plate that and we'll be money ahead. It's got the panel hitch on the back. The wiring's already there, so it's set up and ready to go, so.
Not very many miles.
No, no, it wasn't. It's a pretty good shaped truck, so.
Great.
Anyhow, that, oh, also COVID is back again, so we are battling with that a little bit. Not bad, but it is back, so anyhow, just want to throw that out there, but anything.
Something's gonna be here in perpetuity.
So, yeah. Anything for me?
Got to compliment on your job you did on 145th.
Okay.
Very complimentary.
All right.
Very pleased.
Pass that along to the guys.
I don't have anything Eric.
Okay, all right. And then the one that you called me on yesterday, they're checking on that today on Valley.
Fowler.
Yep, so.
Eric, do you want to talk about two things real quick?
Okay.
What's gonna happen out at the landfill with workers?
Oh.
And then we want to probably talk about you and I anticipated together on the road stuff with that bridge. They probably, we might, we might need to take a field trip.
Okay.
With the commission.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Nope, no, you're a hundred percent.
Cause I need permission from them to ride it.
Okay. Got contacted yesterday from the court system on community service. So I was asking Justin about a liability release form or what have you on writing something for them to be able to do their community service. Help us out, pick up trash or whatever we deem that we need help with at that time, so.
And those waivers that we do, you know, they're not, they're not bulletproof. You know, obviously if someone gets hurt out there, they, well, you know, there's a good possibility we could get sued, but it does protect us and it's great for community service. I think it hits all the, you know, why we should do it. I mean, we get some stuff done. The court system gets community service done. Eric gets his, you know, stuff picked up. We have places that can really use that kind of help, but we gotta get the waiver done. If you guys say it's okay, I'll get it done and get it to him this week or next.
I'm okay with it.
I am too.
Okay, and then the bridge, which bridge?
We got, we've got, we still got this, we talked about this about two weeks ago. We got a bridge that we have some land owners that are around it and things like that. We really gotta maybe focus on these nine bridges that we have in our county that are the old trestle bridges. I saw some pictures of some of them being constructed in the IT building. I mean, they're really neat and they're really cool, but just gotta figure out what we need to do with them. It's time. We got three that really are gonna be, two of them, well, one for sure that's a problem up there by Yellowstone.
Yeah.
And then we have another one up in Commissioner Best's district that is basically not being used anymore. It sits right adjacent to the new bridge. And it's starting to deteriorate to the point where all the base or the trellis across the bridge are all falling in and we gotta. If it goes into the creek, we're gonna be responsible for removing it.
It's washed away on the east, on the west end of that thing.
Yep.
To the point that you get those big footers there and it's always the end.
Right, and then you guys will be responsible for getting it out. And that's way more expensive than taking it out where it is now, so.
I know we had these conversations in the past, but the time we start putting it out there, see if we have any interest in other areas wanting to come and get them.
We, I think, I think we had some real interest from some people out west. And then I know we had from the Riverfront Authority and maybe Rob and I can work on that to actually really. I mean, they had some money set aside at one point to move one of those trellis bridges down there. And there's one that's perfect. I mean, Shane was talking about, it could be one that was just.
I'm thinking maybe even.
Or even Gun Park.
Go further than that.
Right.
Nationally advertised.
Right, so maybe we get pictures of them. With you guys' permission today, we'll get pictures of them and put them up for sale or giveaway.
How many, how many we have?
Nine.
Nine, is that what?
Some of them are very good looking old bridges.
And I don't think any of them are being used. I would suggest we're not using them. Give them away, sell them, get the liability off us, cause like you said, it goes in that water. We gotta clean it up.
Yeah, absolutely.
We in the same situation in Fort Scott. They got one, they gotta get out of the river.
I think they got it.
How much did that cost by the way? Do you remember? Not to put you on the spot. I mean, was it, was it six figures or was it blow it?
No.
Blow it?
Yeah. I might mention too that we're working with Bourbon County Ready on some grants for some bridges that need to be repaired. Eric and I and met with their grant writer this week, so.
Good, okay. So I'll get Bourbon County Ready on it along with Susan and myself and Eric. We'll get pictures posted or whatever we need to do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And that's a formal permission to do that, because we're gonna put them up for sale.
Yep.
I actually probably just make a motion, because we're gonna get rid of county property.
Yeah.
Just a permission to move forward with possible selling of bridges.
Or give them away.
Or give them away.
And nine total of the old trestle bridges.
Yeah, I'll second that motion. All in favor?
To publicize that, correct?
Yep.
Because of the county problem.
Yep.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
District budget. You're next, sir.
Morning.
Good morning. Okay, I'm probably not at near as exciting as Eric. He's always got fun stuff. I brought along my whole crew, our whole crew, or well, not all of us, but I've got, I'm Jared Collie, Chairman of the Soil Conservation District. I got Dev Laas, Treasurer. Ronnie is over there talking to Eric still. Vice Chairman. I brought Marvin Lewis from the NRCS and I got Mandy Shoemaker, our district manager, with us this morning. Yeah, budget. As you can see, you guys got everything I got, I think. First page there, this is pretty, I don't want to keep you guys long. First page is 2021, 2022, and then proposed 2023. That's just basically, we appreciate anything, especially last year. That was just kind of, we're setting ourselves up for the inflation.
Basically, eight and a half percent.
That's what we did. You know, we'll leave that, that's to you guys. My job is to try to tell you why. Let's see, the next page, we've got our total funds from the state. Then our NRCS funds, equip contracts. We had five last year, eight hundred, almost nine hundred acres at sixty-seven thousand. We've got forty, around forty active contracts on that. The five are the last year if I'm right. Is that right Marvin? Okay, our GSP GCI contracts, thirty-five hundred acres, that's three hundred and eighteen thousand. And then FSA has a hundred and sixty CRP contracts in the county, forty-three hundred acres for two sixty-nine. All of these funds are administered with partnership between our district, Bourbon County Conservation District, NRCS and Farm Service Agency. So that is putting seven hundred thousand dollars back to landowners in the county. And that, that forty-three thousand dollar budget helps us, helps us get a, get a sixteen, well, Mandy put that, that every dollar you spend on our budget gets sixteen dollars. I feel that's not quite accurate, because the NRCS and FSA helped out there, but we're all entangled. How's that sound? We're all, we're all tied together. Just to touch on some highlights. The first off, I had to, I made a note there, our soil technician is no longer our soil technician. He's with the NRCS now. But works with county and the, and the road and bridge group for drainage acre assessment. Just some of the, what things we do. We do Conservation Day, Gun Park. Our main thing is outreach. Why we do what we do, we've gotta push it. Soil, soil health, soil erosion control, it ties into our watersheds, everything. I mean, so a lot of our dollars are spent on outreach. Anytime we can get our message out to people, that's what we're doing. Service agencies, let's see. Mandy provides secretary of work for Mill Creek Watershed, administers, marmots and wraps, funded contracts. We are a member of the Chamber of Commerce. We're bringing the fair. And poster, poster limerick essay and landowner conservation awards that we do at our annual meeting. We've got drill rentals, sell grass seed to landowners. We've got three drills, weed wiper that we're still trying to work out for Johnson Grass, Cerise Lespediza. We will have some field days on some of that. We held a local work group in Bronson this year to get some information from landowners on research concern, concerns. Let's see, I'm just kind of going down this list here. Any, there's a budget there that's explained in that. There will be, last meeting, we had a flyer sent out that the NRCS is going to work with ADM on some grants for cover crops, which are gaining some pretty big traction in our, I don't know. I like to say we're kind of coming into our second green revolution as far as some of our farming practices and sustainability. So we want to be right there with everybody when that all comes down. So we're trying to, anything that can come up to help our landowners in the county is what we're after. Let's see, counties around us, you can see their budgets. As I, I think we're all kind of similar population wise and I mean, obviously Crawford's a little bigger, a little bigger population, but just there for you to look at. If you thumb through this report, there's our annual report, you know, that can be thumbed through. There, I highlighted a couple of things I want to touch on. The grass seed for farmers and ranchers, the drills I already touched on. We're members of the, we pay dues to NACD, KACD, CA, yeah. Ronnie, you want to explain those real quick? You, you might as well come up here. I figured you, I'll leave something else, but you can, you're better at that department there.
Okay, the.
Explain the KACD.
KACD is the Kansas Association Conservation District, which is a group of Kansans. There is five commissioners on the board. There's five areas in the state of Kansas, twenty counties to each area. I served on there for sixteen years. I'm off now, but that is very beneficial. That keeps us all kind of glued together. We work with the state government through that process. Dan Meyer Hyatt is the executive director and they're doing a wonderful job. I'll just grant that to them. NACD, I served on it for four years. That's the National Association of Conservation Districts. And they work both in Washington, their, their office is in Washington DC, in walking distance within the capital. So they're there to maintain all they can with getting funding and what have you in the farm bill for conservation. And we fared really well the last several years on the farm bill with conservation money. And it looks like it could be even better here on out because of the problems we're getting in the environment and the water quality and all of that. You all have heard all of that already. I don't have to go into that. RCND, which you guys I think are members of that, is the Resource Conservation Development Council. We're eleven counties here in southeast Kansas. I'm president of it. We're located in Chanute. We have a facility over there we own, we rent part of it to NRCS. We have storage units over there and we have a agreement with, used to be FHA, FMHA, now it's whatever it is.
Martin's Home Administration.
It was that, it's not that. Anyway, we have an agreement with them with a loan situation where originally it was set up to where they could go in and some small business could not get quite enough money. We could loan another ten, twenty percent on top of that and the bank would take care of it. And the money was through them, but we kind of went, we had more funds than we could use that way, so we went more than that now. And I think we got like forty, fifty thousand dollars in that account. So if anybody wants to start a small business, we're there to help. So that's what RCND is all about. And we've been around over there for several years. What else you got on there?
Oh, whatever you need to, whatever your thoughts are.
Of course, they're all heard. We're the Kansas Rule Center. The KC, Kansas Association Conservation Education Committee, they, they set up in a lot of schools and do a lot of conservation education. A very worthwhile deal. Oh yeah, one I want to mention is the KACDEO. That's the Employees Organization, of which that's part of Mandy's deal. And she is very capable of doing what she's doing for Bourbon County. And she's also on the state board as treasurer.
Sector.
Sector. And we're proud of that. And they have done a tremendous job. Matter of fact, without the EOs, the Conservation Districts probably wouldn't evolve that well, because we're there once a month, the meetings is about it sometimes. She's there full time and knows what's going on and does a very good job of it. So Mandy, be committed very much. Whatever she tells you, she, you can go by that, so. And that's, I think that's not all I need to say. Oh, while I'm up here, I'm gonna say kind of a heads up thing, you know, we've been asking for considerably about the same funding for several years. And I've been up here, I don't know, thirty-some times I've been to this meeting now, so. But anyway, with uncharted waters where we're headed for now, we have no idea what's coming forth. The environmental side of it is getting so difficult. There are so many requirements and water quality. They're coming up with new things every day that they've never thought of or never heard of before on water quality. I just read one a couple of days ago. I don't remember the name of it. But there's some water quality problems somewhere that might kill somebody, so it's, and it's serious. And it maybe have to do some with chemicals. It has to do with, it's the way we live, really, some of that stuff. But my bottom line is, our request for funding may be changing drastically in the future. A big kick now, and Jared mentioned just a little bit about it, is soil health. That is a big, big thing with conservation and very well it should be. No-till soil health goes hand in hand. The more of that we can do, the better. And I've got a little pumpkin patch that's been in no-till for ten, twelve years now. I don't think a grain of soil is left it since I put it in there, so. And the water runs clear, the water runs off, but most of it don't even run off no more, so. But it's amazing what it can do and Jared is practicing now on his farms and a lot of other people moving to it. And hopefully we can get a lot more in it. And they work on things and do some programs on soil health in the future, so, field day, so pay attention.
Thank you.
Thanks Ronnie.
You bet.
Mainly is, we, we know what we gotta protect and, and you know, we're here for soil health. You know, it helps, it helps the county. You probably cleaned out a few ditches or need to, or we've got soil in ditches. I mean, we, we know we've got to stop that. Anything we can do, we're just trying to get the word out. A couple of things Ronnie touched on, I just, I want to get out of here. I want to thank Mandy and he did, and she is the glue that kind of holds us all together. She's very active in the community and outside. And our budget sends her to places, like I say, these state boards and that sends her to those things to, to keep her on top of her game and keep us all held together. Like I say, Ronnie already talked about her. She's, she's phenomenal. The only other thing I think I really wanted to say, Deb, do you have anything that I'm missing out on?
I just think it's important that we acknowledge that we try and support the youth.
Oh, that is what I wanted to touch on, yes.
Engage as early as we can to understand how important, what ag is and how our part plays into that. To include Envirethon is a, one of the areas where we get FFA students engaged whenever we can get them. We involve them as many activities as we can so they can see what it is that we do and maybe steer them into their career fields. So that's critical. We have to have our youth come back and be engaged in the, in ag, one way or the other.
What Conservation Day, we, how many fourth graders, how many?
We have around two hundred fourth graders that we rotate through tech states. And those are the pictures that I put in.
Yeah, there's a bunch.
My board volunteers, NRCS is a part of it. We get the FFA kids to help also and it is, I tell them every year, this is my second favorite day, almost favorite day of the year, other than Christmas. my second favorite day, almost favorite day of the year, other than Christmas. It's Conservation Day at Gunner. It is, the teachers love it. Um, you know, we had to kinda do it a little bit different one year because of COVID, and they couldn't transport the kids to, to there, so we went to them. We did it individually with the schools, so. But that's a really huge thing for us, and this year the cost of it went up dramatically just due to inflation, is, you know, ours' deli sandwiches are no longer $5 a bag, so.
Okay.
Jared, I don't know if we mentioned him, but our district conservation is more of a-
Yeah, I introduced him. I, I did introduce him, but like I say, he's, he's here for my backup, he's got my back here, just in case, just in case. Uh, but I don't know, do you guys have anything for us?
No, thanks for doing a good job.
Pretty cut and dried and, like I say-
Maybe I have one.
Okay.
So, do you have figures on the amount of land that's been taken out of production over the year?
For-
For Burberry County.
As far as homeownership, or-
Uh, no, no, no longer using that pasture-
GRP program?
Crop land or anything else?
Oh, not being, not being used as, no, but I don't, I'm, I bet we can try to find it.
Be interesting figure to come up with.
Farm Service Agency may be able to-
Yeah.
Put something together, because everyone does their crop reporting next door to the Farm Service Agency, so.
You and I both know that, uh, land is changing hands quite often anymore.
Yes, yes it is.
Oh, big time.
But as, in the west side of the county, for sure, uh, some of those smaller landowners, I think it's very important that we make an outreach to them, uh, for practices and, you know, first-time home farm owners, and this is a resource that I think we can get in a pickle if we don't, uh, don't keep dabbling, you know, keep, keep ourselves available so they can come to us and, you know, for whatever they need.
Historically, we all grew up with the idea that, with some of our grandparents, 80 acres, and it was a sustain, was a sustainable farm operation. And they had everything they needed, and they only had to buy a few things. That's changed dramatically over the last 50 years. And, uh, you know, we, we have a lot, we have young farmers that were trying to help come back into the fold. Some of them have the opportunity to be bringing, be brought in with other family, and brought in that way, and others are trying to do it purely on instinct. And, uh, we're a part of that community, trying to assist them in, you know, making it successful. So, there's one, uh, there's many programs that USDA has out there for, uh, new farmers, and we try and promote that and get the word out as much as we can. Uh, it's no big surprise, there's a lot of them that don't want Uncle Sam involved in their business, and, uh, you have to convince them that, you know, some of it's for the good, that there's reasons why if we engage with you, we're, it's not like we're trying to get in your underwear drawer, it's because there are necessary objectives, and we can work together, it's a win-win situation. So, that's what, another, one of the programs that these two individuals are able to talk to folks that come in the door, or direct them across the, the building to FSA office, and work with them to assist in making things a go, even in the hard times.
One thing to have to realize, you know, I use your service.
Sure.
And, uh, you keep us up to date on what the new regulations are.
True.
Regulations come down to Washington.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't care if you're involved in the program or not, the regulation's gonna affect you.
Yes, they are.
So, that's, it's a-
Mandy's pretty good at keeping us straight on policy, so.
You bet.
In Marvin.
In Marvin, yeah, those are, don't forget Marvin, so.
Farming ranch is the biggest industry in Burberry County.
It is.
And we need it for that.
That's right. So, we have to be advocates.
Yeah, that's, that's our, I would say-
And we'll, we'll have a presence at the, at the fair. We don't always get a lot of traffic, but once again, Mandy tries to set up a booth that engages kids. If you get the kids to come around and look, sometimes you get the adults too.
Fair home show.
That is, if they're, if they're on short leashes, if they're just, you know, turned loose, then we don't see the adults, but you do your best. And that's another way we can engage. I didn't say we need to have tasers on them, I just said they're loose.
Short laces.
So, um, I don't think we need to tie up any more of your time.
Thank you.
I, I think we've covered everything. We probably didn't, but, yeah.
We did.
We'll see you next year, I guess.
All right.
If not, we'll, we'll try to do better, so.
Have a good day.
All right, thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Clinton has a folder like you guys, but I believe she's, please make sure he sees it, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Good to see you folks.
See you, Jim.
Take care, Ron, have a good day. Okay.
Right. Power works for me.
Um, they took me to motion to approve all the power.
Probably won't need you, Ronnie.
So, I took it.
Okay.
You still there?
Uh, we, we're bypassing Ashley Shelton. Ashley has been removed from the agenda. I would like to ask for executive session, KSA 75-431-9B2 for consulting with an attorney for the public body or agency, which would be Dean Privilees, and Attorney of Client Relationship. Two commissioners, County Counselor Susan Bancroft, for seven minutes, please. I hear a second.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Well, we're turning back here at 9:45?
Two.
43.
43.
Sure.
Sunday.
Sometime.
You need to practice that, you're not as fast as Clinton.
I don't wanna be. I'm gonna do a commercial, I don't wanna do a commercial.
You know that.
Okay, come out executive session at 9:45, no action.
Second.
Can we go again?
Yep, we're going to go back in executives. Yeah. All in favor, aye. Stay with us here.
I'm working on it.
We wonder, might go back in executive session. KSA 75, 431, 9B2 for consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be Dean Pribley's, an attorney-client relationship, seven minutes.
You know, I think we should probably go 10 and really it's about possible litigation and also about demand letters too.
Possible litigation, demand letter, 10 minutes to Commissioner, County Counselor and Susan Bancroft, Finance Director, or CFO, I'm sorry.
9:56.
Okay.
Do you push button?
I did.
Make a motion, come out executive session, no action. And return.
To this room.
Into this, to the commission room.
Yeah.
9:57. All in favor, aye. Mr. Makes, you're up next.
I've got stuff that I need to do, but we'll wait until next week.
Susan?
I need to add an executive session. Sorry, guys, for acquisition of real property.
Okay.
Um, seven minutes.
And how old do you want in there?
Yeah, me, Justin and the two of you.
Do you need Rob?
No. No.
Okay.
So I make a motion, we go into this executive session, KSA 75, 4319B6 for delivery discussions of the acquisition of real property for seven minutes, seven minutes.
I second that motion, all in favor.
And, second, we will resume.
You two, Susan and Justin.
Right. We will resume, what, 10:05?
Yep, okay. All in favor, aye.
Aye. You push button?
Yep.
So I'm, we resume normal meeting at 10:05 with action.
Back in this room.
Back in this room, back in the commission room.
Second, aye, second that, all in favor, aye.
Aye. I make a motion, we give Mr. Makes the authority to move forward with a addendum to the lease agreement with CHC to include the acquisition of real property.
It's acquire.
Acquire.
I second that motion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Mr. Shane Walker.
Um, he's not here.
Okay. Public comment.
Um, can you give any more detail on the CHC real property, what property are we talking about?
They haven't approved it yet, so I don't know.
Okay, well, if you don't ask, you don't know.
Yeah. I think it has, I don't know if it's been approved by their board, so until they approve it, I won't be able to talk about it publicly, but obviously there's land that the CHC has in the, I would call it the campus of the mercy, and we're trying to get that back into the county's ownership so we can move forward with a potential, potentially something new down the road.
Yep, okay, got it. Also, I just want to take the opportunity to thank you all, which glifted were here, because I appreciate you all working really, really hard to conduct the meetings with order, with respect. There's tough subjects, hard subjects that you all tackle, not every meeting, but on a lot of meetings, and you work really hard to communicate to the public and let us communicate with you, and it's a two-way street, I know, the respect goes both ways. I just wish there were other entities in town that felt that it was as important as you all do. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. You know, I've always said we work for the public, and the public needs to be very involved in what we do in all aspects, any government.
Hey, guess who pays our wages?
The public. We work for the public, everybody else in government works for the public, and a lot of people forget that. We don't, so anyway, any other public comment?
I want to thank Ann Derr and Carol MacArthur, who's not here, but they spent several hours here helping me destroy witnesses and destroy election materials that were.
I should have made a motion, I should have made a motion to approve funds for.
Yes, we are going to do it a different way next year.
I'm going to ask her if she paid you or not.
So how's your hands and wrists?
They're okay. And now it's lost me fingers.
Rob, Rob Harrington. Did you want to talk to us, public comment?
Well, I need a.
You're up.
I need an executive session.
Did I forget one?
For. I need an executive session for, what is it?
I don't know.
Trade secrets and what is that one? What is that called?
75, 4319B4.
75, what is it again? 4319B4. That's what I need it for.
To discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations.
You, you two, myself, Justin and Susan.
I make that motion.
KSA 75, 4319B4, discuss data relating to financial affairs, trade secrets, corporations, partnerships.
He didn't say how long, he didn't say.
How long, Rob?
Five minutes.
I second that motion.
Return back here at 10:14, second.
All in favor, aye.
So we, uh, resume normal session at 10:15. No action.
Second that. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any other public comments? And you all so quiet, so that's great, that's all right. Do you have anything?
Do I have anything? Oh, I've got a lot of stuff.
Yeah, but can't wait?
They can wait, they can wait for eternity to that.
I've got a red truck setting home with a camper hook to it, and grandson's waiting, so.
Hey, you know, just kind of a quick one, a little story, a couple of little stories if you don't mind.
I don't mind, I don't.
So, the wife, she was wanting to go camping. And I'd sold my camper a long time ago, so I found a real good deal on a real nice pop-up camper, and took minimal to get it all back together where it needed to be. Went camping Saturday, came home Saturday. It was too hot.
Pretty hot.
It was horrible hot. Another little story, and this kind of gets done, I told it on the radio this morning, but it gets down to the honesty factor, and that's one thing that I pride myself in 100% is being honest. So I went to, I changed my own oil in my vehicles, so I was changing my oil on my Volkswagen, I went down, I bought the oil, five quart container and an extra quart for emergencies, and a filter. Got home, drained the oil, changed the filter, put the plug back in the pan, opened up the five quart, and somebody had brought back a used five quart container full of used oil. So I couldn't change my oil, and I had to go back to the vendor and ask for more oil.
Very, very.
I don't have any.
Okay, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
End discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'm going Missouri, fishing.
Hey, have fun. Stay in the shade.
I don't have good hands, but I have an outstanding air conditioner.
Why go camping if you're sitting inside?